I called to order the County of Monterey Planning Commission meeting of August 27, 2025. And with that, we'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Commissioner Deal will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Deal. With that, we're going to go ahead and have roll call.
Commissioner Hartzell.
Present.
Commissioner Getzelman.
Here.
Commissioner Work.
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Shaw.
Here.
Commissioner Mendoza.
Here.
Commissioner Deal.
Here.
Commissioner Roberts.
Here.
Commissioner Monsalve, absent. Commissioner Gomez.
Here.
Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you, because this would be the time for us to give information to the public if they would like to comment either through Zoom or through any emails.
So if you can bear with us while we get the slide that provides information on participating remotely. Okay, well, I will go off of memory while we're here, just to get us going. For individuals, welcome, thank you for joining today. If you are joining remotely, oh, perfect, thank you. If you're joining us remotely, we would like to point you in the direction of the Zoom link for today's meeting, which is available on the agenda. There is also the landline and mobile number. You can call in with the meeting ID. It's on the slide before you, which... And to participate during public comment periods in today's meeting on the Zoom platform, you can raise your hand by opening the reactions button and clicking the raise hand icon and do the same to lower it by phone, raise and lower your hand by pressing star nine. Another way to participate is by sending email, PChearingcomments@countyofmonterey.gov. This email address is also on today's agenda, and we do monitor this live during the meeting. However, now that we've started, there is no guarantee that we will capture all communications, but we do our best. Members of the public who, during public comment, who have indicated they'd like to speak via the Zoom or phone, would be granted permission to unmute themselves during that public comment period. And when you are offered that permission to mute and unmute yourself on the platform, utilize the microphone button at the bottom of the screen and on your phone by pressing star six. Thank you. We're also happy to continue our pilot program for Wordly. If we could get the Wordly slide. There we go. And perhaps we could advance to the Spanish Wordly slide as well. Thank you so much. Perfect. So you can join if you need translation assistance for today's meeting. If you're here in chambers, you'll see that live translation in Spanish up on the screen. If you are remote, you can either scan the QR code or go to the website that is at the bottom left of the slide for Wordly. And when you, that will bring you to Wordly. And when you join there, you can select your, please select the language of choice and your session ID, and that will join you in and get you translation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, we move on to public comments. And this is a time set aside for the public to comment on a matter that is not on the agenda. And so is there, is there anybody in the chambers that would like to address the commission? Seeing no one, is there anybody on Zoom or any emails?
There is no one on Zoom and no emails.
Thank you. We go to, excuse me, agenda additions, deletions, and corrections.
There are no agenda addition, deletions, or corrections.
Would this not be considered, okay, thank you. We move on to Commissioner comments, requests, and referrals. And this is a time set aside for the commissioners to comment, request, or refer a matter that is not, that is on or not on the agenda, commissioners. Seeing none, we move on to approval of consent calendar. And is, are there any items that any commissioners would like to pull from approval of consent calendar? Seeing none, is there, oh, sorry, I was too quick.
No, that's okay. Commissioner. I know you're in a hurry today, I can tell. No, that's quite all right. No, just the appointment of Mr. Kenyon, I need, we need to talk about that one before we move ahead with that one.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody in the chambers that would like to pull an item from approval of consent calendar? Is there anybody on Zoom or any emails connected to this item that would like to pull one of the two items from approval of consent calendar?
There are no emails or hands up on Zoom.
Okay, so I guess we can either approve the item number one, Commissioner Deal?
I was just, I think you were about to say, I was wondering, I thought they had pulled item two from the consent calendar. Is that correct? We'll only be voting on item one at this time?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's correct.
I think so. I think that's the way it works.
Okay, so.
So you can take action on the rest of the consent calendar.
Yeah, so we're going to go ahead and we need a motion to approve item number one from consent calendar. And a second. Commissioner Shaw made the motion. And so in one, Commissioner Deal, second in the motion. Is there any, I'm sorry. Trying to rethink this. But anyways, any other comments from the commissioners? If not, all those in favor of the motion so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Now we go to item number two, which was pulled to appoint Fred Kenyon to the South County Land Use Advisory Committee. And so, I'm sorry?
Do you want me to give a little background on that one?
Yes, please.
So I can let the commissioners from South County speak, but just, there's a correspondence on the dais for consideration on this matter. Our South County LUAC presently has three active members, one of which is relation married to Mr. Kenyon, who is being proposed to be added to the South County LUAC. And in doing that, at the face, there is no outright conflict or concern, but there are a couple of considerations for the commission that, that an appointment of two members from the same family, same household, could, could create some potential challenges that could be addressed. And so I, I think the, really what's at discussion today is for consideration for appointment of Mr. Kenyon. And any question, comments, or concerns, given the potential, potential risk of having two household members. And with the appointment, that would bring the South County LUAC up to four active members.
Thank you. Commissioners, comments, questions, concerns. Commissioner Getzelman?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yes, thank you, Ms. Secretary, for the recap. I appreciate that. So I wanted to be very sure that the commission at least had the opportunity to discuss this with county council's input. I personally do not think it would be an issue with these two people. I know them really well, and I think they would take seriously the concerns. I've shared with them the concerns that county council has, and I think that they would be very considerate and careful about their deliberations over anything. So I think it would be absolutely fine in this case. I just wanted complete transparency, and I wanted to be sure that commission had an opportunity to, to join in if they had concerns.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Roberts?
The only thing I'll say, pretty kind of unrelated to this appointment, is I think we need five members of any LUAC before they can meet to decide on anything. So while this brings this LUAC up to four, like other LUXs, we, we really need members on all LUXs at this point, so that they can meet and discuss the projects in their areas.
Chair. Commissioner Getzelman?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Roberts. Yeah, Ms. Secretary, did Mr. Bartosz formally resign?
Yes, we did receive resignation.
Because at the last, at the last LUAC meeting, he was making threats of doing that, but he had not done it yet. So I didn't realize we were down to four. Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Deal?
Thank you. I think I would have a concern in some cases, but if it's to bring the LUX to a working number, I think that that's a counterbalance to most of those concerns. But I have a question for Commissioners Getzelman and Work, which is, do these two persons generally agree with one another?
No, I don't. My interaction with them is limited, I will admit, but I don't think they're one of those couple that are in lockstep, no.
Thank you very much.
Politically correct, but anyways, any other commissioners? Seeing none, we'll have a public comment. Is there anybody in the chambers that would like to address the commission on this particular item? Seeing no one stepping up to the podium, is anyone on Zoom or through any emails that would like to address this particular item?
There are no emails or hands up on Zoom.
Thank you. With that, bring it back to the commission for other comments, questions, concerns, motions. Commissioner Gomez?
I understand the concern, but I think, as was stated earlier, the greater concern is really ensuring that this LUX is made. I think it's some, there's some real challenges in terms of recruiting volunteers, and I think we need to continue to work on getting more folks to join our LUXs. With that, I'm prepared to make a motion in support of this item. Of the appointment, yes.
Motion, okay. Commissioner Gomez has made the motion for approval. We need a second. Commissioner Mendoza seconds the motion. Any other questions coming, concern? Commissioner Deal?
Yes, thank you. I would just like to put on the record, my, I do have some reservations about this as a general practice, and I wouldn't want to consider it as a, as a precedent in all cases. If we didn't have this overpowering need to get that LUX back up and functioning, I would probably not support the motion. So that and the, and the support of the, the area commissioners is what's swaying me in this particular case, but it wouldn't necessarily be true in all cases.
Thank you, Commissioner Deal. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Hartzell?
I saw in Mr. Breyer's email that he suggested some training on Brown Act. What is that training, and how does someone get to it?
Through the chair. Our office has offered training to the LUX once a year. I guess I was thinking primarily about that, excuse me, but in this particular situation, there might be something, I don't think that's usually done until the end of October, so perhaps I should, perhaps I could have a call with them preliminarily and answer questions, and then we can do the bigger training and go from there. I just want them to be aware of the issues, but I stand by everything in the email. I don't, it's not a per se problem, and, and if people are careful, then it's, it's doable. It's just being aware of the risks and potential pitfalls.
Through the chair, I really appreciate that, and just want to note that it's easier to be careful of things you know about, so we can make sure they have that information. I think it'd be a good idea.
Thank you, Commissioner Getzelman?
Yes, and I would encourage the county council to reach out to them, because I think that's a wonderful idea, to give them a little extra heads up on, on the pitfalls of what they might be getting themselves into. So thank you. Thank you for that offer.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to appoint Fred Kenyon to the South County Land Use Advisory Committee so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. So with that, we move on to scheduled matters, and that's item number three. We go to PLN 240231, Moss Patrick with W and Robin M. Riley, TRS. And with that, will the staff, please go ahead and make a presentation?
Please share staff, right? Good morning, Chair Gonzalez and commissioners. My name is Haya Honorato, and I will be presenting staff's report on PLN 240231 for Moss. The property is located at 28007 Mercurio Road in Carmel, within the Carmel Valley Master Plan. The lot was created through the Mercurio subdivision and is zoned as low-density residential with building site sticks and design control, site plan review, and residential allocation, zoning, district overlays. The project consists of construction of a single-family residence with a detached garage and development on slopes in excess of 25%. The parcel has a .22 acre building envelope due to the remaining .78 acres conveyed as scenic easements, including a 50-foot easement along the southeast property line, a 40-foot easement along the south property line, and a 60-foot easement along the northwest property line, highlighted in green for reference here. The main residence and garage are contained within the building envelope, and no development is proposed within the scenic easement. The proposed height is 24 feet 8 inches, well below the 30-foot height requirement. Elevations of the main house, as shown here. The proposed exterior colors and materials are consistent with the Carmel Valley Master Plan for having an earth-tone appearance. Colors include light brown exterior fiber cement walls and trim with natural stone veneer accents, and a Class A standing steam roof in dark gray. The Mercurio subdivision consists of various sized homes throughout the proposed, throughout and the proposed house will have a comparatively similar bulk and mass to other residences within the area, as shown here. The proposed project includes 2,455 square feet of development on slopes in excess of 25%. Pursuant to the general plan policy, OS 3.5, development on slopes that exceed 25% is prohibited unless a use permit is obtained, and the appropriate authority finds that no feasible alternative that would allow development to occur on slopes less than 25%. In this case, the one-acre parcel is situated on a forested hillside and is surrounded by steep slopes to the north and east. Due to the steep topography of the parcel, development on slopes cannot be avoided. Much of the development on steeper slopes is associated with the driveway. The proposed garage and single-family dwelling are sighted in the flattest areas of the property on, sorry, portions of the garage will be located on slopes in excess of 25%. But there is no development on steeper slopes associated with the main residence, as the entry patio and bridge that connects to the house to the garage are cantilevered over the steeper slopes. There are no trees proposed for removal, and reciting the house or garage would result in a longer driveway and removal of native trees and additional development on slopes in excess of 25%. In this case, the proposed development on slopes, specifically the siding of the driveway, better balances the forest resource and hillside protection policies of the general plan and the Carmel Valley Master Plan. The topography of the land leaves no opportunity for development on less steep slopes and requires that trees be removed in order to access the flattest building site location. Therefore, the proposed project meets the required criteria of general plan policy, OS 3.5. This project was initially brought to the Carmel Valley LUAC Committee on August 4th, and the project was continued to August 18th. The LUAC members reviewed the project and addressed comments brought up during the duly noticed meeting. The neighbor from an adjacent parcel downhill from the proposed project expressed concerns that part of the proposed residence may look directly into our house. The agent expressed that the applicants are willing to provide additional screening by planting trees this year, in the hopes that the trees will mature and provide coverage when the applicants are ready to move into their home. The LUAC voted unanimously to recommend approval, as recommended, to provide the additional screening along the property line adjacent to the downhill neighbor. The project meets the criteria of a Class III categorical exemption of the SEQUIT guidelines as the construction of a single-family residence on a residentially zoned property. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission find that the project qualifies for Class III categorical exemption and approve a combined development permit for the construction of a single-family dwelling, associated site improvements, and development on slopes in excess of 25%. This concludes staff's presentation, and staff is available for questions.
Thank you for the presentation. We bring it back up to the commissioners for any comments, questions, clarifications. With that, commissioners, Commissioner Deal?
Yes, thank you. Excellent presentation, I really appreciate it. Was the, I'm not seeing a condition reflecting the offer by the applicant to plant the screening trees. Has that been recorded anywhere?
That has not been recorded, but I think we can add it to the landscape condition.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none from the commissioners, then we are going, I'm gonna go ahead and open a public hearing. And with that, will the agent please come forward and make your presentation?
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Robert Carver, Studio Carver Architects for Mr. Moss and Ms. Riley. So this is a modest infill in a established subdivision, a three-bedroom, three-and-a-half-bath, 2,265-square-foot house with a 740-square-foot garage. Lot coverage allowed is 35%. We're proposing 7.2%. As Haya pointed out, we're very constrained by the scenic easement around the property, and I would like to say we did appreciate working with Haya and, and her straightforward staff report and her, her support at the LUX. We have balanced the cut and fill. We have a fire-hardened Class A roof and siding. We, as a request, or in response to a request from the HOA, we widened the, the parking area for deliveries. That was the only concern that they had, so they approved the project. Yeah, I mean, we have, we have a water meter, and we have purchased Malpasso Water. And the, the, the reason really that we, we have the driveway is most of the houses in this subdivision just have very steep driveways. So in order to make the driveway itself shallower, that's why we, we did the, the extra amount of grading on, on just a little bit over 25% slopes. Other than that, I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. I really, Mr. Carver, I really appreciate designing to the rules, as you know, from many years past. It's something that really speaks to me, and I think that this design is a good example. I just wanted to just double-check that, was there any issue with recording in the resolution, the condition about screening that was offered at the LUX? Did the applicant have a problem?
No, I think we're fine with that. The Linda, the neighbor, I talked to her after the meeting, I gave her my card, she said she would contact me, and we could work something out. She can, she can also plant some trees. We'll work it out.
Thank you.
Could we see what, could we know what exactly the condition would say before we agree to it?
We'll look to staff for that.
We can definitely share the condition prior to final approval of the resolution, but it would say something along the lines of providing screening along the property line adjacent to, to the neighbor. Maybe somewhere along that.
We are working with CalAAM. We do have a meter, and we're working to try to see if we can get the water flowing so that we can plant the trees prior to even breaking ground with the house.
Any other comments from the commissioners? Questions? Seeing, seeing Commissioner Deal?
And just moving away from the project as to process for a minute, if, I would be more comfortable if some assertion by the applicant addresses a concern of the LUX, if we record those someplace in the document so that it doesn't get lost in years to come. So just a comment there. So if somebody says, yes, we're gonna do this, we should write that down. But otherwise, thank you.
Any other commissioners? Any other Commissioner Hardsell?
Just following up on that, does there need to be any change to the draft resolution to reflect that?
Through the chair, no. I believe under finding number 1K, it does address the comments of the conversation that took place at the Luac and that the applicant was willing to provide additional screening, so it has been memorialized within the resolution.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Roberts?
On that same line, it sounds like the agent has said that there isn't currently water, so they can't plant trees now. And so I guess it sounds like it would be important that whatever is added, acknowledge that, you know, they can't plant trees today because there isn't water. And so.
Any other commissioners? Seeing none, then I'm going to go ahead and, let's see, we're still at public hearing, so is there anybody in the chambers that would like to address the commission on this particular item, PLN 240231? Seeing nobody in the chambers coming forward, is there anybody on Zoom or any emails that would like to address this particular item?
There are no emails or hands up on Zoom.
Okay, with that, we bring it back to the staff to see if there are any further comments or clarifications.
Staff would like to add, as far as the condition, we can add a timeline to where the condition can be fulfilled prior to issuance of the building permit so that the trees are planted prior to construction.
Commissioner Deal?
Okay. There's no landscape condition currently at all, is what I see. So we're not amending a condition, right? We're adding a condition?
We would be adding an additional condition, and that's correct.
And we are, just going back to the resolution, there will be a small change about the number of conditions, but I'm sure that's just administrative. But I just want to be clear that recording what was said at the Luac in the agreement is not the same as a condition, so that's why I just have a little bit of angst there. But otherwise, I think the applicant would be interested in knowing what they're gonna be required to do, but clearly, as soon as possible or as soon as water is available or something like that seemed to be the gist of it that I heard. And I'm seeing the applicant nod, so that's a good sign anyway. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think broadly for the department, we've heard that comment and suggestion going forward. We'll just make sure that we work with project applicants and our planners to make sure that we clarify things that are offered verbally, that those make it into, kind of formally, into a portion of the resolution and conditions as appropriate.
Commissioner Shaw? No. Commissioner Hardsell?
I just want to say I visited the site. I really appreciate the designing to the rules. I observed the very steep slopes. And if there's no other comments, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay, Commissioner Roberts?
I'm happy to second that motion, and I just wanted to say that I appreciated staff's very project-specific details about the development on slopes in the resolution. So, thank you.
So are the clarifications included in the motion?
Yeah, sorry, just to restate, I move to approve staff's recommendation as amended in this meeting.
Second.
Okay, any other comments, questions, concerns from the commission? Seeing none, oh, Commissioner Mendoza?
I'm just trying to get personal clarification here. Is it pretty normal for the planning commission to be protecting other views from other homes? Because it used to be where, I mean, how do you enforce that? How do you control that? They can plant trees, they can be cut down eventually, or it's just unfortunate. I think it'd be very difficult to enforce. And that's the problem with some of the conditions we put in place. If it's, I mean, obviously, you want to be a good neighbor, but I think that should be a neighborly thing to do. I mean, they have communication. This is, you know, I would really appreciate if you can put some screening here, but that's a neighbor thing. But I think at what point does the county get involved where, okay, you gotta put these trees up, they have to grow a certain height, so you can't look into my house before you occupy your house? It can be a little tricky. I mean, I'm not questioning that it's not a good idea. I completely agree with Commissioner Deal in reference to put it in as a condition, but it's, how do you make sure that it's not gonna end up being a problem down the road, per se? You know, it's like, how do trees burn down, then what happens? You know, so I just think it's just a little complicated. It's just a question. I mean, I'm not, it's a great idea. It's just, how do you enforce that? There's so many things that sometimes enforcing can be quite difficult, so it's just.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Deal?
Thank you, and I agree. And we aren't, in fact, enforcing anything at this point. We're recording an offer by the applicant that addressed the neighbor on paper because that apparently influenced the Land Use Advisory Committee's decision. So when the applicant offers something, we would write that down and say that was part of the proposal now, not that we imposed it, but that's what they said. So I was going at it from that perspective rather than saying that we told them they had to, but saying they had the conversation, they had the conversation in public. The outcome of that conversation affected the decision that their neighbors made to recommend the project. And so I wanted to record that I was following the local suggestions, and they had worked it out, and they're gonna plant some, they offered to plant some screening trees, and they're gonna do it. And that's basically, the planting of it was the offer. So as long as they plant them, I think after that, we leave it to the neighbors. But in this case, just to be super clear, I'm not proposing that the planning commission is enforcing private views on anybody. I'm just recording what the actual project proposal was.
Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you. No, I just, I had the same kind of similar concerns, but then this conversation was very enlightening, so I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners?
I just want to say thank you for the clarification. That makes sense. You're just acknowledging it, we're not enforcing it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I kinda had the same concerns regarding property rights, but anyways, thanks, everyone, for their input. Any other commissioners? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion as amended, please so indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
And if I may, through the chair, before we move to the next item, I would just want to take this moment to sadly and happily congratulate Haya. She has accepted a position with, she'll be in the same building with us, she'll be moving over to the Public Works Department, working with their traffic division. As she's been here with our planning team, she's been our liaison with Caltrans, she's done an amazing job, and so we will continue to get to work with her and also enjoy the experience that she's had with planning to bring that over to the traffic team because that's a good deal of what we interact with as well on projects. So while it's a direct loss to us, it's not a loss overall to our county and to our planning efforts. So just want to take this opportunity to wish you the best and look forward to continued collaboration.
Well, again, thank you and congratulations. With that, we move on to referrals. Planning Commission referrals.
So for today, as I've started to do for the referrals, what I've done is, as I update them, I'm trying to bring the referral sheet once a month to you all with updates from the, since the prior. I have been bolding those, so it helps catch your eye what changes, what updates have occurred. And this week, I wanted to just flag for you as well that with regard to referral 1808, request for updates on tiny homes, that referral has been a little stagnant since 2022. There had been a presentation. That being said, we've had some specific questions come up. It was particularly in relation to Big Sur, and I did attach the response that we sent to Big Sur, and our staff is working on looking at kind of the work that they did with that response to start to develop some FAQs that could apply not only to Big Sur but to other parts of the county that we would incorporate on our ADU page to help inform and update. So I just wanted to flag that for you all and happy to answer any questions that you all may have. Thank you.
Commissioner Hardsell?
I wanted to say thank you for the response and thank you to Sarah for the response on those questions from Cabs. And it's not Sarah's fault that there is vague stuff in the regulations, but I do notice that there are some questions that weren't able to be answered directly, and I'm super hopeful that we'll find our way to that, both through the FAQs and through the forthcoming regulations being reviewed by the Coastal Commission. But mostly, I just wanted to really highlight how professional and competent this response was and express my appreciation, so thank you.
Commissioner Deal?
Thank you. I agree completely with those remarks and appreciate the thought. I just have one question that I've been confused about for a long time. What's the difference between a manufactured home and a mobile home?
Through the chair, this is not legal, but this is just personal knowledge. Manufacture, it's in the name, actually. Manufactured homes can't, cannot be moved. They are usually prefabricated, brought in a truck, and then built on-site. A mobile home can technically be transported somewhere else. I think that's the main difference.
Through the chair, could we get some clarification on that? Because, I mean, as we know, mobile homes can be taken off of their axles and put on a foundation and hooked up to plumbing, and that's kind of of a complicated thing for me, and I think it would be really important to know exactly.
And if I may, so for our building code, and when we are looking at any dwelling that is manufactured offsite and/or partially manufactured, assembled on-site, to make it a permanent structure that is placed on a foundation. So you are correct, it could be a mobile home, but there may be ways in which that can be modified and placed on a permanent foundation and therefore become a dwelling unit. And it affects the, there are some nuances in state between if the state has regulation over it or if it becomes a dwelling unit, but it primarily relates to is it placed on a permanent foundation and otherwise treated as a dwelling unit.
Any other comments, questions? With that, we're moving on to department reports.
Thank you. Yeah, so I wanted to just give a couple of updates. One, while I was out last meeting, was that last meeting? Yes, on the 13th, there had been a question that came up regarding Acela and the public Acela Citizen Access and public-facing utility and challenges with that. I did want to update this commission to let you know that Acela as a company is working on an improved public-facing platform that will be rolling out as a standard for all Acela program users after the first of the year. My understanding, it's coming out in 2026. So I have not seen that. I don't know that our staff has seen that, but I think the hope is that that will be a much more user-friendly platform. In the meantime, I don't know if there are any specific concerns or issues that we could address through either helping to have more how-to guides or other available for users of Citizen Access in the meantime, but otherwise, I'm hopeful that the revised platform that will be coming out might be much more functional from a kind of public-facing user perspective. Also, while I was out on the 13th, the California Coastal Commission approved, as submitted the county's amendments to our local coastal program, Title 21, for vacation rental or short-term rental regulations in the coastal zone. We have now the next step for that because the board had adopted an intent to adopt resolution. I am returning, planned to return on September 23rd, to the Board of Supervisors for their final adoption of those regulations. And then should they be adopted on September 23rd, they would become effective 30 days after that, so on October 24th. And then individuals who are operating without permits in the coastal zone would have two months until December 24th to come into compliance with the new regulations. And that was the request of the commission, or excuse me, the board was at the time when they approved the coastal and the inland. The inland had six months to come in compliance, but felt that because these had been in the works for so long that it was appropriate to do a shorter compliance period in the coastal zone because the board had approved it, and we were waiting for coastal certification. Also, please, yeah, if you have questions, excuse me.
I have a question about enforcement of inland Airbnbs at this, or short-term rentals at this point, and how is that working and what does that look like in terms, and just so we can understand, I guess, for the coastal area also now, once it goes into effect, what that looks like.
Yeah, so April is when, in the inland areas, the formal compliance date grace period had passed for either coming into compliance by applying for appropriate approvals or ceasing operations. In the coastal zone, we have, excuse me, in the inland areas, our code compliance team has been working on, in a targeted strategy to begin to do the enforcement. We currently, just a reminder, we did have two positions that were, two positions that the board had augmented our compliance team with to help support vacation rentals enforcement. At this time, we've been able to fill one of those positions. We are in the process of filling additional code compliance positions. So, and some of the prioritization is, for example, now in areas where commercial vacations are not allowed, looking at enforcement on those operations for individuals who have not otherwise come in. We also, just a reminder, we added a permit technician position as well as an additional assistant planner position to help support the permit and maintenance of those, of the permitting for vacation rentals. We just had successfully filled the permit technician position, and we have our recruitment open to fill some of our vacancies for assistant planners, assistant and associate. So we have had a number of approvals of permits go through, a number pending, and we will continue to make headway on issuing those permits as well and slowly resolving where we have some entanglement between operations that are in permits that may or may not be approved. In the coastal zone, it'll look very similar. The timeline will be shorter. Our hope is by then we might have an additional code compliance inspector as well. In the coastal zone, one thing I will note is that based on the number of operating vacation rentals, the commercial vacation rentals, which do require a coastal development permit in at least one of the planning areas, possibly two, and I apologize, I'm not remembering, the cap that was in place for the number of rentals that could have issued licenses is actually lower than the reported number of operating at this time. So we are kind of preparing and being mindful of the potential that we might run up against a cap in the early stages, but there's no guarantee that all operations that are operating, when they actually come in for permits, would. when they actually come in for permits, would be qualified and get through. So we will see how that evolves. So in the coastal zone, we will be mindful of also the potential of running up against caps sometime, and I would guess the first, potentially the first year, depending on how the applications come in.
Thank you. To follow up on that, what about the platform enforcement, the electronic enforcement? Are we proceeding with that initiative as well?
Yeah, so we've been working with a few of the platforms. We have a couple that have been complying and are sending us, are sending us their reports regularly. Those are going to our code compliance team. We continue to work with one and expanding our work with platforms to encourage them to comply. I will acknowledge that that was something that we, just from staff's perspective, we haven't subsequently followed up, and that's actually a next step now that we're moving through getting compliance in the coastal zone as well, that I will be following up with some of the platforms that have not yet started complying as well.
Through the chair to follow up. I really hope you can prioritize that because that's where the complaints come from. The public goes to the platform to confirm whether or not someone's renting and then comes in and complains to us. And so waiting for the platform to cooperate strikes me as a step that may or may not be necessary, given that we get reports from individuals using that platform without any involvement of the platform operator whatsoever. So that's where I'm concerned, is that the members of the public who complain, which they do, and I'm not understanding why, to planning commissioners, but I guess we're the universal hall monitors, get that information from the platforms. And so I'd really appreciate if the county could be prepared to address those kinds of complaints proactively, because the same opportunity is available to them, it is not time-consuming, and it is a good way to begin an inquiry.
Commissioner Roberts?
To follow up on that, I was going to ask a platform-related question also. As either the member of the public or somebody looking to use a platform, how would I know that something is legal or not legal? I know in my own planning in other cities, you can see a permit number something, or, you know, or unrestricted, or, you know, it puts, there is an option to see. And so I'm just curious if that's similar for Monterey County?
Yeah, I think, so there's two different things. We, for all of our permitted operations, they are required to include a certain suite of information with their advertisements. That is something that we can enforce locally with the operators because they are required to include that information, and it's really between them and the platform, whether or not that there's a format to show that. I think the, our regulations request, require that platforms not post for short-term rental individuals who do not have proper permits. And so that is the piece in terms of, are we continuing to see postings from individuals who are not permitted and do not have the license number that is required? And that is definitely something that we will, that we are working with and county council and our code compliance team to move forward.
One more follow-up. So if I were to look for inland short-term rental now, and it had a permit number, could I Google that permit number to see, is it actually a valid permit? Is there a place to, I mean, that's a lot of, this, I guess, is more from the public side in terms of, is this illegal?
So we have our webpage platform that has all of our issued permits and the VR numbers, which is our license numbering. I actually am not prepared, I can't answer the question of whether or not if you do a public search of that, if that shows up on the advertising platforms. We can definitely, I can work with, we've just started really gearing up again with Coastal Imminent with our team, and so I think that's something that we're happy to follow up with, and I can come back and kind of give an update with our next meeting through department report on some of these questions as well. And just a reminder, too, that part of it is we are still in that flux time where individuals are allowed to continue to operate as long as they're in our queue for permits, so they may not have a number yet, but if they're at least in the queue until they've been formally approved or denied, then we're not enforcing on those advertisements as long as there's no health, life, safety issues.
Any other commissioners? Well, thank you for the questions and responses and seeing, oh, sorry.
And just one more item that I just wanted to follow up with for the commission through departments report. The Signal Hill project, which was PLN 2400, I'm missing a number, I didn't get the right number, the one in Pebble Beach, that was the, yes, we're all familiar with that project. I did want to let this, let the commission know that the board just considered yesterday and approved a slightly reduced and modified design by the applicant on appeal. There were three appeals, and so that did get approval by the board, and now we can move forward, and the applicant can move forward. Thank you.
Commissioner Gomez?
I noticed that the, I think the 60-day period ended for, the review period, I think, ended for the housing element. I wondered if we've gotten any responses. That's one question. The second question relates to, have we seen any more applications using the builder's remedy that come in?
Thank you, my apologies. That was an important update that I should have given. Yes, we did just receive the formal finding letter from the State Housing Community Development Department on our second submission of the housing element. We had received some preliminary input, and so had already, have also already met with them and have started working on our response. So we will be working with our team to get a response and what's looking like will be our third submission, hopefully final. We're still digesting them, so we'll get that turned around. In terms of builder's remedy applications, so I am going to look with, actually, I'm going to ask Ms. Jensen to speak to it. Yes, we have had two applications, but I'll have her speak to it because she's been monitoring those.
Good morning, Commissioner. I believe as of this week, we have about 10 builder's remedy applications, two of which were preliminarily submitted last week and have six months to formally submit.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Well, seeing none, then this meeting is now adjourned at 9:57 a.m. Have a fantastic rest of the day.